Evening, everybody. Let's call tonight's meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unlemishen, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with public audience tonight. Yes, sir.
Woodrow McNiven, August Road. All right, most of you know me. I'm the guy up in the booth that records these meetings. But a little background, I started volunteering for SCTV about 14 years ago. And I started right here videotaping the Board of Selectmen meetings. And some of you may remember way back then, there was actual cameras. We had cameras down here videotaping the meetings. Back then, Tom Vincent was First Selectman, and I've covered the bulk of the meetings in all the years since. This past Sunday at the Veterans Day celebration in Eno Hall, Eric Wellman, in his speech, brought up the concept of service and volunteerism. That democracy only works when people get involved, and that there are many ways to get involved. Well, I was at that meeting, as you can tell, and I'm very proud of my 22 years as a commissioned officer in the United States Navy. But I'm also equally proud of all the years I've been an SCTV volunteer with a particular focus on making these meetings available to anyone via TV or on their computers, because what is said here and what is done here is important. But don't let that go to your head. Besides, every once in a while, as I've seen over the years, some real drama develops, and that's exciting. Several years ago, and I don't remember the exact circumstances, but Dominique Avery was right up here at this podium at public audience for a Board of Selectmen meeting. And I'm going to paraphrase what she said at the time. Basically, her words to the effect was that, "Well, you all know, you know all SCTV is here, but it's sort of like, you know, it's in the background, kind of like elevator music. But if SCTV should suddenly no longer be here, then you'd really miss us." And I think this is true. Consider this: You probably have noticed that coverage of news and events unique to Simsbury has lessened in recent years, not only in traditional media, but in digital media, too. Let's take the Hartford Current. How much do you really see in the Connecticut section these days about Simsbury? Maybe two, three times a month, there's maybe a little something in there? And what about the Valley Press? It still seems to be going pretty strong. However, it covers five other towns, and it's also a free publication that is dependent on paid advertising. And when paid advertising goes down, which is a real phenomenon these days due to the online advertising trends, the page counts go down, so there's less room for reporting, hence, less reporting on Simsbury. What about the Simsbury Patch? Some of you may recall there really was a patch that was dedicated just to Simsbury. No longer, just a name only. And every now and then, something unique to Simsbury does come up in the Simsbury Patch. And also, some of you may remember, there was a beautiful glossy magazine several years ago called Inside Simsbury. I don't think it made it past half a dozen issues before it folded, which was really a shame, because it was really well-done, really high-class. But now, let's contrast that with SCTV. Over the past several years, our coverage of Simsbury government meetings and other local events has actually increased. For example, we used to only cover this board and the Board of Education, but now, we cover finance, zoning, and a couple other boards as well. So my assertion to you tonight is that SCTV is truly your best source of information today for all things Simsbury. So if you agree with this, and if you want SCTV to survive into the future, to continue doing what it does best, keeping Simsbury informed, which has been our stated mission, which has been our stated mission statement, okay, since our inception in the early 80s, then please give generously to this year's annual fundraising campaign. And I'm sure most of you have received this in the mail in the last week or so. And to all of you who've been supporters of SCTV in the past, I thank you on behalf of the SCTV board members. But I'm also here to ask you, if you can see it within yourself, to give a little bit more this year. 10%? 15% maybe? And I say this because, you see, cable-cutting is a real phenomenon these days. And when that happens, the funding that SCTV receives from Comcast and Frontier is less when their subscriber base decreases. So your donations are needed more than ever to help fill that gap, and they really do make a difference. So, thank you very much, and if you'll excuse me, I have a job to do upstairs.
Thank you very much. Who's driving the ship right now?
Karen Hand. She's got the helm.
I had a picture of a rudderless ship up there. It's a little scary. Who else would like to speak? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. At the October 22, 2018, the Board of Selectmen listened to Sue Prebitson, Director of Gifts of Love, present an agenda item, bond conversion project, in two phases for approximately $2.5 million. Gifts of Love has registered the town farm at the 2016 tax return as a farm-to-family, Inc., Gifts of Love. The 2017 return has not been submitted. The town farm property was gifted to the town for the town poor through the Eno Trust, through the Eno Trust states, and I quote, "Hereby quitclaim to the town of Simsbury to be used for the occupation maintenance and support of the town poor of said town, and for no other purpose whatsoever, and only for so long as it shall be so occupied and used, and only for so long as the town shall care for and support its poor on the said farm without contracting them out to any person or persons. For their care and maintenance, shall such farm belong to said town, when it shall cease to be so occupied, it shall revert to the grantor," end quote. Amos Eno never envisioned that the farm barn would be converted into an upscale banquet hall for $2.5 million. The town was given the land for the poor of Simsbury, for the town to manage, not Gifts of Love. This appears to be a blatant violation of the Eno Trust. The concept of using the barn for upscale events would be a windfall for the company Simply Eventful LLC that Gifts of Love contracts for their fundraising. On Maura Fitzgerald's Facebook page, she states that she is the owner of Simply Eventful LLC from 2007 to the present. Maura Fitzgerald is also, it also states that she is the chairman on the Board of Directors of Gifts of Love in Avon. Is the Simsbury, is the taxpayers' appropriation of $2.5 million for the bond conversion on the town farm a benefit to the poor or a benefit to Maura Fitzgerald's company, Simply Eventful LLC, is the event planner for Gifts of Love? According to the Gifts of Love 2016 tax return, there is a listing for land, $155,743 building, a building of $657,845 with depreciation of $118,885. Are the buildings and land noted in the tax return owned by Gifts of Love or the town of Simsbury? In the tax return, there is a listing for $89,921 per director with no name associated with the salary. Why is this a continual, why is there a continual turnover of directors of Gifts of Love? Recently, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, approved a transfer of $2,914.88 for wiring for the Simsbury Performing Arts Ticket Booth. The S-PAC testified that they were raising money for the ticket booth and infrastructure. However, the S-PAC had unexpected costs associated with the ticket booth. All change orders for unexpected costs should be charged to the S-PAC. Since the Simsbury PAC is a private organization, they should be treated as any other business associated with town services. Overruns and costs should not be levied on the taxpayers of Simsbury. The S-PAC should return the $2,914.88 to the taxpayers. I would like to thank Tom Taberski, Recreation Director, for listening to the pickleball players for adding lines for pickleball on Simsbury Farms tennis courts. I recently noticed a backhoe digging up the sod at the entrance to the War Memorial at the library. I questioned why the sod was being replaced. I spoke with Tom Roy, Director of Public Works, as to the reason for the replacement. Tom Roy told me that a hairy chinch bug had invaded the sod, causing it to turn brown, and had to have it replaced. I was told that he contacted Mike Wallace, the superintendent of the Simsbury Farms golf course, who deals with managing the grass on the golf course. I contacted Mike Wallace and was told that he did get a sample of the sod, and the hairy chinch bug was nowhere to be found. Mike Wallace's professional opinion was that there was cement on the understructure of the sod on the first job, and there wasn't enough topsoil to allow the drainage from the soil. This was confirmed by my conversation with the men that were replacing the sod. Why not tell the truth? There is also concern about having a grass in close proximity to the cement walks, and cement radiates heat. It creates issues with the grass. The cost of the sod replacement was paid by the taxpayers at a cost of approximately $2,000. It might be prudent to replace the sod, adding more cement to the walk to prevent high maintenance costs. The Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund expenditure exceeds revenues by $307,520 as of October 31, 2018. Taxpayers should not subsidize continual shortfalls in recreation. Restructuring of the Simsbury Farms complex should be mandatory. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak in public audience? Sarah.
Sarah Nielsen, Simsbury Main Street Partnership. Bear with me, I'm a little bit under the weather. So, there are a lot of places, times when we can do good for ourselves, there are a lot of times when we can do good for the community. Next Friday and Saturday is the culmination of both. You can do good for yourself and the community. This is our annual reminder that we are doing our Shop Simsbury program, Black Friday, November 23, and Small Business Saturday, November 24. So, just a reminder, because some things have changed, all of the participating places are going to sell $50 gift cards. For every $50 gift card purchase during those two days, they're going to give you a bonus $10 gift card certificate, whatever. Okay? So it's a win-win for the community, but it also puts money into the Simsbury economy. Last year, we sold 873 gift cards, and that kept more than $43,000 in Simsbury during a time when our retailers are not doing, you know, they don't normally do sales on Black Friday and Small Business Saturday, not like this. So, real money in their pockets keeps them open, and so I encourage all of you to participate. And for those that love Meadow Asian and other places, there are some fantastic deals. Tons of restaurants, Meadow Asian, Antonio's, Old Well, Harvest Cafe, Table 570, as well as retailers, small businesses. Okay? So make sure you support them. Necker's, if you have young children, is also participating. So, again, it keeps real money in the community in Simsbury, and it keeps mom and pops alive. So it's really important. We hope you'll come out and support them. The second thing is our passport to fun. And this is great, because this is no purchase necessary. You get eight stickers from eight of the different participating businesses. You drop it off at the last business, I know that Eric's daughter did that last year, drop it off at the last participating business, and you enter to win one of 11 fantastic prizes. So we like to do something that's also free for the community. It gets people around. I can't tell you how many times Tom Horan, who's owned his shop for a million years, says, you know, people come in and say, "Oh, this is fantastic. It's so beautiful. I've never been here before." So, again, passport to fun. We sent a mailer, and Joan likes this, no taxpayer money was used for this. I write a grant. It's a private foundation, so we pay for all of the printing, the design, we do the mailing. If you haven't received it in your mailbox, as you will within the next day or two. I'd like to give a shout-out to the Simsbury Public Library, who for the second year is our partner. This year, if you bring a receipt from a purchase from any of the Simsbury businesses, while supplies last, they'll give you a free gift. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. Again, a couple of years ago, we started writing this grant, so we were able to include them. They came on board, so it's actually a drive by Simsbury Main Street Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce together. And then the final thing is, if you haven't seen, this is just our mailer, and it really shows you, you know, again, a lot of the local faces, the business community. And a reminder to those that are watching that, these are the people that give back to the schools. They give generously to the senior center and social services. These are the people that help keep all of those wonderful things that we enjoy in Simsbury going. So please make sure you come out and support them. It couldn't be more critical, especially during this online age. Hopefully, we'll have even bigger numbers next year. And with that, I'm sorry, I'm going home.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public audience tonight? Okay. We have one presentation tonight for the past, I did the math, I think it's been 21 years, the Recycling Committee has recognized a business or an individual for their commitment to recycling in our community. And I'll turn it over now to Mary Turner, who's Chair of the Recycling Committee.
Thank you. Mary Turner, 11th and 12th. Yes, exactly, Eric. We've been giving this award since 1997, and I think only out of all those years, one year was missed. So it's pretty good, good running. I would like to invite up Barbara Friedland from the Simsbury Grange. And I'd like to present her with this annual award. It's the Recycling Committee's pleasure to present the annual recycling award to the Simsbury Grange for its electronic recycling events this spring and several other years. This event is one of many activities that the Grange sponsors, such as healthcare, education, agricultural interests, and other community services. The Recycling Committee is proud to present this award to President Barbara Friedland on behalf of the Grange, and thank you for your generous commitment to our community.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. A few words about the Grange. And I want to thank you on behalf of all the members of the Simsbury Grange and Boy Scout Troop 76, who have volunteered with us for the past three years for every recycling event that we have done, which has been really great. We do it twice a year. I'd also like to thank Green Monster Electronic Recycling. They're a company down in West Hartford, and they collect all the electronics for us, and they've been with us for the past three years as well. And Andy Andreo has generously given us his parking lot to use at the Simsbury Center shops to let us, to let us do it, do the event. We hold our recycling event twice a year, Saturday before Halloween. Unfortunately, we got rained out this year with that, with the nor'easter. And also, the Saturday before Mother's Day. So our next recycling event is on May 11, from 9 to noon, so save up all your electronics and come drop it off. We try to be very user-friendly. People just drive up, and we unload for you, and we put it in the truck. Just make sure that you come early, because sometimes the truck fills up. The Simsbury Grange also has an interest in events and activities around, you know, environmental things, agriculture, and community service. And recently, we've been partnering with more organizations in the town of Simsbury. For example, we partnered with a historical society this summer to do Music on the Green two events in August and in September after our agricultural fair, which were really great, and it seems to make it easier, you know, to have, because each group has few volunteers. So when you have two organizations doing those events, it just, it makes it easier, and it makes it, you're more able to put on more events that way. Our next event is in partnership with the Simsbury Library. We're doing a Beekeeping 101 event on November 19, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the library. If you'd like to learn more about raising bees or harvesting honey, this could be the program for you. We welcome all new members and volunteers for the Grange. We'd love to have more members. And if you'd like to attend a meeting, we have them the second Wednesday of every month at 7:00 p.m. at the Grange, which is in West Simsbury. And for more information about the Grange, you can go to our website, simsburygrange.org. And thank you again for the recycling award. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to the First Selectmen's Report. This fall, there has been no issue in town that has generated more community conversation than the increase in bear sightings, and that's what I'm going to focus most of my report on this week. Our police have received more than 525 bear-related calls for service in 2018. It's more than 50% higher than any previous year on record, and the year is not yet over. I've heard from residents who are deeply concerned about the growing frequency of human-bear encounters and are advocating that some action be taken to reduce the bear population. I've also heard from others who are just as passionate that no form of active wildlife management be taken. I wanted to share with you steps that the town has taken to get a better understanding of this issue. Late last month, we held a meeting with two officials from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, including Rick Jacobson, who's their Director of the State Wildlife Division. We learned that DEEP is working with UConn on a study of the state's bear population, and Simsbury has requested that we be included in that study. We also learned that the state's bear population is growing at a rate of about 10% per year. And since the black bear has no natural predator in Connecticut, the bear population is expected to continue to increase from approximately 800 today to several thousand in the next decade. We also learned about DEEP's bear response policy, and our police department is working to ensure that our policy is in line with theirs. Wildlife policy is managed at the state level, and therefore, any changes to how DEEP currently manages the state bear population requires action by the state legislature. I've been in regular contact with Senator Whitcos and Representative Hampton, and some kind of legislation to address the bear population is expected in the next session of the General Assembly. I would encourage anybody who has thoughts or concerns on this issue to reach out to me or any member of your Board of Selectmen. I wanted to congratulate Steve Scarrett, who's owner of Floors Reincarnated in Simsmore Square. They're celebrating their 30th year in business this month. On November 11, I had the honor of participating in our annual Veterans Day ceremony organized by the veterans of foreign wars post 1926 and American Legion post 84. I'd also like to thank the Abigail Phelps chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. In celebration of their 125th anniversary, they presented the town with a flag as a gift, which will adorn the new program room at the library, which is under construction. I am grateful for the work that all three of these organizations do on, for our town and on behalf of veterans. In trail news, the National Bike Challenge concluded at the end of September. And get this, nationally, our community finished first in our size class with 124,731 miles. We topped many sizable communities that are larger, including Houston, Texas, St. Paul, Minnesota, and Albuquerque, New Mexico. So I thought that was pretty cool. And actually, that's where I'm going to leave things this week. On that note. Well done. Maria.
Great. Thank you, and good evening. Under Board of Selectmen Business, a few budget-related items and updates for you. As a reminder, the tri-board meeting has been scheduled for Monday, December 3. That will be at 6:00 p.m. in Program Room 1 of the Simsbury Public Library. The Board of Finance did have their regular meeting last night, and they had a preliminary discussion regarding budget guidance at that meeting. They did that in preparation for the December 3 meeting. They wanted to be prepared for that meeting, and in working with Amy, they prepared and looked at a bunch of data, current trends, things of that nature. And they did come up with a very preliminary target for us, for the town budget of around 2.7%. That is not inclusive of some things, such as whether or not we tackle the Parks and Rec Fund and some things of that nature. So again, that was a very high-level preliminary number, but they, again, wanted to have a really thoughtful discussion with you all on December 3, and wanted to make sure that they were prepared and well-informed for that meeting. They are also working on a capital and CNR policy. You may recall that this was something we had talked about towards the end of last budget season, that I thought it would serve us well if we did have a policy that could then guide budget development and how we would budget for capital projects. They have been working on that, and we are anticipating that they will adopt a capital budgeting policy at their December 3 meeting. So, once the tri-board is essentially done, they'll just take up a few matters of business, and that will be one of that. Budget monitoring. As you may recall, I have a very strong interest in implementing quarterly budget status reports for us. Again, want to thank Amy for her efforts on that. She's created a quarterly budget status report for us on revenues, expenditures, as well as our capital projects. And she reviewed that information and material with the Board of Finance last night. So we will be bringing that information to you at your upcoming meeting, and it's currently available online. We also, in late spring, started to post Board of Finance packets online as well, again, in trying to support our goal of being more transparent. So all of that material is now available online as well. Under Economic Development, we have good news to report, that the Commission is having their kickoff meeting after Thanksgiving on November 27. We've been working on preparing a comprehensive orientation for those folks and resource materials for them, and are looking forward to getting that group underway. The Business Development Incentive Committee will be meeting this coming Monday night, November 19. We did receive an application from 690 Hot Meadow Street. That is the Ensign Bickford Mansion property. And so that group will be reviewing their request for various tax abatements, as well as fee waivers. And that group will forward any recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and I do anticipate that you would receive some recommendation either after November 26 or December 17 meeting. For Departmental News and Notes, under Culture, Parks and Rec, Tom Taberski has been elected President-elect of the Connecticut Parks and Recreation Association, and that is for a two-year term. So congratulations to Tom.
Look at you! Well done. Big time.
And for Engineering, EverSource is going to be performing some electrical transmission line maintenance that will be occurring over the winter and through the spring. They are upgrading some old wood structures with new steel structures. They have been notifying folks of that work. At your, most likely at your next meeting, they have made a temporary request to access some of that land through a town-owned parcel. Some of the terrain makes it incredibly difficult for them to access some of their infrastructure without getting to it through our, one of our parcels. So we'll be bringing you some information regarding that at the next meeting. Under Planning and Community Development, you may recall that the Region's Hazard Mitigation Plan is underway in terms of the update. I think we had a presentation on that in the February timeframe. There is a public information session on the current version that's going to be held this Thursday, November 15, at the West Hartford Town Hall. There's also an opportunity for people to submit written comments, and we've provided that information here on the report. Under the Police Department, we'd like to welcome Kyle Denalsky. He was sworn in as a Simsbury Police Officer just recently on October 31. He is a graduate of Simsbury High School and grew up here in town. And a neat fact about Kyle is that he is part of a long family tradition of public service to our community. His father has worked in public works for about 35 years, and his grandfather, I believe it was his guest grandfather, retired as a sergeant from the Police Department, and his great-grandfather retired as a captain from our Police Department. So, really happy to have him on board, and welcome Kyle. Under Special Events and Programs, our Social Services Department is in need of volunteers willing to assist with our various food programs to help our residents who struggle with food insecurity. So if folks are looking for an opportunity to volunteer, we would welcome those, that time and energy that you have. And our Social Services staff, phone number here is listed if you're willing to help out. Just a reminder, the Simsbury Celebrates is coming up on Saturday, November 24, from 5 to 8 p.m. There'll be great events culminating at the end of the evening with the fireworks show. Information can be found at simsburycelebrates.com. And while the event is free, we really do rely on donations in order to make that event happen, so if folks would like to donate, they would certainly, certainly appreciate that. And lastly, Family Open Gym Basketball will begin on Sunday, December 9, from 1:00 to 4:30 p.m. That happens at the Henry James Middle School. The fee is $2 per person, or $5 max per family. This is held weekly throughout the winter, but not on holiday weekends.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Maria. Moving on to Selectmen Action, Tax Refund Requests. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $2,864.53, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved. Second.
Any more conversation?
Might make a public service message around this?
Yeah.
So I got a bill from the DMV for an overdue emissions test on a van or a car that I had sold back in March. Now, this is my public service for your folks. I thought by turning in my plates, that I had essentially notified the state of Connecticut, that I no longer owned that car. that I no longer owned that car. I did not go one step further, which is I had to go online, or while I was there in person, should have signed an affidavit, turning over the registry and canceling it. But you can also do that online as well, is to know that online that you no longer own that car. Because I did not do that, I now owe the state of Connecticut $20 for late emissions on a car that I no longer own for six months, and I owe the town of Simsberry money for a car that I don't own anymore. So by doing that, just by turning in that plate, doesn't remove you from the town of Simsberry tax. So you're getting a couple of extra dollars from the Peterson family this year. That was my public service measure. Turning the plate doesn't, doesn't, doesn't do it for you.
So I did just get a new car, so thank you for the heads up.
That's what we have. Appreciate it.
You can transfer the plates.
That is. Is there any more conversation on this?
Wow.
Well, we know who is not getting a tax refund. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Interesting tax vote we've ever had.
You gotta add some spice to the reaction.
Well done. I appreciate you, Chris.
I hope they're laughing upstairs on SCTV. All the drama.
Item B is Proposed Ensign Bickford Foundation Donation. They have generously offered to provide the Tri-Simsberry Adventure Race with a financial donation to support the 2019 event, which is scheduled for May 5 of next year. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to accept with our thanks a donation from the Ensign Bickford Foundation in the amount of $2,500 for the purposes sponsoring the sixth annual Tri-Simsberry Adventure Race?
So moved.
Second.
Question.
Yeah.
Why are we taking the money? Do we run that?
Isn't it a town fund?
Yeah, it's part of the special revenue fund. It's like Simsberry celebrates, it's a subcategory of revenue fund.
It's its own pass-to-account, but our department handles the registration for the race. That's the way it was set up five years ago, I guess, six years ago.
So we have a liability too?
The town assumes a liability for the races.
That's what some of the co-sponsors are.
I think I knew that, I just, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I did know it. I'm just, as I'm thinking about it, as we're sending people up and down the river in kayaks, that we want to continue with that liability. We'll talk about that another time, so.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item C, Simsberry Celebrates, another wonderful event, is scheduled for November 24, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Items C and D on this agenda are donations to support that event. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to accept with our thanks a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Simsberry Main Street Partnership, Inc., for the purpose of supporting the annual Simsberry Celebrates event?
So moved.
Second.
Any further conversation on this?
I have no liability concerns with that one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item D, is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to accept a donation, again with our thanks, in the amount of $2,000 from Keller Williams Realty of Greater Hartford, also for the purpose of supporting the annual Simsberry Celebrates event?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Item E, so going back to 2016, the town received a state grant to help with the design and construction of the multi-use trail in Terrafill. And this is actually largely a housekeeping item, but Maria, I was hoping you could provide a little bit of background on this.
Sure. So what we are looking to do is to execute, essentially, it would be a contract extension to extend the grant. We are currently still in the design phase of this project. The grant funds we did receive also allow for construction. Right now, construction would be on schedule for spring of 2020, and the state is amenable to granting that contract extension. So Bob thought with the change in form of government that it would be prudent to essentially redo these resolutions so I could execute the contract extension.
So just to be clear, this is just for the design. We haven't yet approved any funds for the actual construction, right?
So this grant award was in excess of $300,000, and it would help to fund part of the construction for this particular trail. And this is a very small section. It's essentially the connector from Terrafill to Curtis Park.
Oh, not up the hill. Okay.
It's not the Bloomfield.
All right, I was, no, I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking about up the hill. Okay.
Any other questions?
I was like, yeah, $300,000 is not going to cover it.
It did mention in there that there was, you guys have allocated some monies towards design already?
Correct, so we've.
Just curious, how far along is the, how much more design work do we have?
Sure, not much. And we have spent about $18,000 from the grant so far on design and survey work and things of that nature.
But we're close to the end of the design.
We're getting there, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I'll put the three motions together. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the contract amendment from the State Department, from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, to be in effect from January 13, 2017, to January 31, 2021? And further move to approve the attached resolution that authorizes the town manager to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection on behalf of the town of Simsberry? And further move to authorize the town manager to execute the state of Connecticut nondiscrimination certification on behalf of the town of Simsberry?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item F is Proposed Revisions to the Purchasing Policy, which has not been, it was last adopted in its entirety back in the early '90s, and this board has a goal for our town manager to update that policy. We formed a work group to review the proposed changes, which you can see in your packet tonight. Before I open it up for any questions or feedback, is there anything you wanted to highlight, Maria?
Sure, just wanted to point out that there was some discussion as to whether or not this was an ordinance or a policy. Again, our town attorney did make a determination that it was a policy and not an ordinance. The work group did take a look at that issue, and the work group did not recommend creating a purchasing ordinance, but simply amending the purchasing policy. What we've also provided in here, just for your reference tonight, are more detailed, essentially, operating procedures that we'll be using for departments in terms of following and adhering to the policy if it's adopted this evening.
Any other questions?
So I was part of that work group, and this was, I believe, the second time that Chris Kelly and I looked at it. So again, it was very much a continuation of what I think we did the first time, but it was great to work with Amy to make sure that we got the adequate level of controls in place, but also a responsible amount of financial flexibility for our department heads and the rest of town to get their jobs done. My favorite story was, the first time we went through this was, Tom Roy puts in a lot of guard rails every year, and it's the same piece of guard rail with the same contractor, and it's the same price. And it was originally just a very cumbersome process for the same piece of sheet metal every single time that somebody runs into one of our guard rails and we have to replace it. So this, while it doesn't seem like a big deal, helps with some of the nickel-and-dime stuff that some of our town staff has to deal with that doesn't provide a lot of service to the town, but is not exactly the most satisfactory from a job standpoint. So these are, these are important things. The second piece is, we had a very brief and friendly debate on whether ordinance or policy. We went with the policy side because, again, if we need to make changes, again, we certainly can do that a little bit more nimbly with a, with a policy versus an ordinance itself.
Thanks for your work on that. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to adopt the proposed revisions to the purchasing policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item G, so the next set of items on the agenda came out of recommendations from the Personnel Subcommittee. The first is a proposed change in the work hours for the Public Works Administrative Secretary 2. Management is looking to change the work hours from 35 to 40 per week, which would align with other administrative positions in Public Works. And currently, there's no one in the position, so if there's a good time to do it, now would be the time to do it. Any questions on this? Okay. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to approve the change in work schedule for the Department of Public Works Administrative Secretary 2, positioned to 40 hours per week, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the attached memorandum of agreement?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The town manager received a request from the CSEA Union to reclassify the supervisor of buildings and ground position. The Personnel Subcommittee endorsed the proposal that would change it from a position that currently qualifies for overtime to one that would be exempt, and the analysis that our town manager did found that it would be roughly a cost-neutral thing. Is there anything you wanted to add to this?
Just that we, we do not have sort of a traditional classification system, but in absence of that system, I made sure that we still did a level of analysis regarding this position. So we did do what I would call an internal position comparison. We also took a look at external positions that were comparable in nature. What's interesting about this position is I would characterize it as a working supervisor. And this particular person does supervise seven employees at the moment. And when really looking also at the FLSA status, so exempt, non-exempt, based on span of control and scope, really felt that the reclassification of this for wage and hour purposes to exempt was appropriate. We also took the opportunity to look at the job description to make sure that that really more accurately reflected the current duties and responsibilities of the position. I think that highlights it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for the internal and external benchmark. I thought that was very thorough. Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to approve an annual salary range for the facility supervisor position of grade 6 of the CSEA Administrative and Professional Employees Pay Plan of $80,047 to $95,666, which may be amended from time to time through action by the Board of Selectmen? Further move to approve that the position be designated as an exempt position?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item A is Proposed Revisions to the Code Enforcement Officer Job Description and the Title. So the proposed title change would be from Code Enforcement Officer to Code Compliance Officer, which I think the feeling is that is a more customer-friendly title. And then there were some other changes to the job description which were minor in scope. Is there anything that you wanted to highlight, Maria?
No, exactly, thank you. Something that Mike and I have made a priority for the department is to really work on it being a customer-service-oriented department. They certainly have a regulatory role, and that's important, and they do need to fulfill that regulatory role. But our philosophy is that, you know, we certainly want to educate folks, and it's best to achieve compliance as opposed to having to take enforcement action. And again, so I think that the term co-compliance officer really reflects that new philosophy that we're trying to embrace in the Planning and Development Department. The changes to the job description are largely housekeeping in nature. Again, it's just reflective of current duties and responsibilities assigned to that position, as well as certifications that we expect the person in that position to hold. The one minor new addition is that we will, over time, we have three agriculture leases that we manage for properties that we own, and we will be shifting the management of those leases over to planning, and will be expecting our professional staff in the planning department to assist with it. But aside from that minor new addition of a responsibility, there were no new duties added to the position.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to approve the proposed modifications to the job description and to change the job title for the Code Enforcement Officer position to Code Compliance Officer?
So moved. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item J is looking at implementing flexible spending account as a benefit option to town employees. So currently, FSAs are offered by the Board of Ed, which allow employees to set aside pre-tax dollars for medical and childcare expenses. That's currently not an option for town employees, and if this board is supportive of expanding this benefit, my understanding is that it would be cost-neutral because there would be some payroll tax savings on our part. So there would be some administrative costs, but ultimately, that would balance out. Any questions on this? Anything you wanted to add, Maria?
Curious, was this an observation on your own part, or did you have town staff who came requesting? Because it is in the Board of Ed.
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. So sort of my bread and butter for over a decade was employee benefits and classification and compensation work. And when I first started here, I inquired, you know, as a new hire myself, and I said, oh, you know, do we, do we have an FSA? And we don't. And I said, wow, you know, I'm surprised. And our HR coordinator had said, you know, we get that question quite a bit when we get new hires, or, you know, people will ask if we have one. I think it's a win-win. It's an optional program for people to participate in. They have an opportunity to set aside pre-tax dollars, but we, as the employer, are also achieving tax savings on those payroll taxes as well. And so we've had some inquiries about both medical, as well as the dependent care. And since the Board of Ed currently does have a vendor that they're working with, it would be a slightly aggressive timeline for implementation, but at least for this initial plan year, you know, I plan to proceed working, working with that vendor. And then potentially, we've also discussed doing an RFQ for maybe a new vendor. I think if we join forces because of the volume, we can get a more competitive rate for the per participant per month fee. So yeah, looking forward to this, if you all support it. I did feel that with it being potentially a new, a new offering, if nothing else, for sort of the symbolic factor of sort of bringing this to you, making you aware that this is something I was interested in pursuing, to see if, again, you'd be supportive of implementing the plans.
Thank you.
Yes. Good thing. Any other questions?
I'm just kind of surprised it hasn't happened before now.
Yeah. Thank you for accelerating this, Maria.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. I'm excited about it.
Reason number 275, why it was a good idea.
Is there a motion effective November 14, 2018, to implement flexible spending account plans for health care, limited-purpose health care, and dependent care for town of Simsberry employees, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all related plan documents and agreements?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Wonderful. So item K, and we're getting the Board of Selectmen priorities and goals displayed. So the Board of Selectmen got together on a Saturday, I believe it was back in October, and we spent time discussing and brainstorming various priorities. And then we ranked those priorities, and that's what we're going to be looking at tonight. And what I, you know, these are, I imagine, are going to be, some of these are going to become future projects for staff, others potentially future goals for Maria, others will have potentially budgetary implications. So in looking at this ranked list, I wanted to get consensus that this looks right. I wanted to just point out an observation for discussion, that some of the items that got the most votes are more sort of back-office-related type things. And it's not to put a value judgment on it, but they're not things that our, our residents are going to necessarily see directly. Not that that's wrong. But what I don't want to lose are some of the, some of the bigger-picture ideas.
Yeah, when I first saw this, Eric, you just said it better than I was thinking about it, but, you know, we've, we've got kind of the must-have back office running the town stuff, and then we've got more of the strategic priorities, and they're all commingled in here. So I wonder if we separate. It's too loud.
And I was confused. I think I sent, I sent Maria and Eric back my selections, which were a little bit more expansive in nature of the, of the types of programs, not devoting whatsoever the ones up there. These are some of the ones. But then I became somewhat questioning myself, was, should we have had two separate? Because there are certainly ones. Because there are certainly ones that we could, I think, tackle in the near term, which is the coming year. And then, do we actually have a second set? Did we really, did we really question and ask ourselves the right positioning of this and say, there's a future vision for well of Simsbury as well? And would that likely have encompassed those bigger thought process, blue-sky kind of ideas that we had, that would certainly show the town something that's visual versus internal and directional and important?
And I kind of ended up with the same place. The problem I ran into is just because something is a five versus a three or a two, but there's going to be some, a number of things which are more internal operations versus external. And there's going to be some low-hanging fruit, which may be a two, but it's relatively minimal dollars, if any, to implement, and it's something we should really look at. Because I don't think, a lot of times, you get caught up into just doing the internal computer programs and all that stuff, and there's some other stuff we can do on the sidewalks or something that we should be doing also. So I almost think splitting this list is, would be a benefit. And then, some of the things, we shouldn't just focus on all the high-end stuff, so to speak. I think there's some other things we can mix in there that almost can give timelines to that may be very beneficial to the town as a whole.
Yeah. And as I think, as I read through this again, it's almost like there's three lists up there, right? There's strategic priorities, like evaluating the tax rate, looking at, you know, our benchmarking that we worked on from a long-range planning standpoint. Then there's things like looking at the solution for the Curtis Park to Terriffel path connector, which is really a capital item versus a strategic priority, right? And then there are things like, again, investing in financial reports and software, which is, you know, again, more of the, and again, so, and again, we had 10, we had 10 votes, so to speak, but just because I voted, I mean, I technically wanted all of them, you know, and I know we can't have that, but at the same time, it was, there was, so I tried to pick three or four capital items, tried to pick three or four, as I'm thinking about it now, strategic priorities, and then, you know, two or three, whatever was left over of more of the back office stuff. You know, there's things like, I mean, you know, only two of us picked invest in utilities and underground infrastructure. You know, maybe that would bump up, or maybe, you know, that's a far-off, we can't really afford that, so we take that off the list, or, you know, and again, I know I'm the only one that voted for increased transparency and the anticipated use of grant funding. I'm pretty sure you all agree that that's, you know, something we should do, but again, we all run out of votes.
I was only given 10.
I know. So I don't want anybody to think that, you know...
I actually voted for utilities and infrastructure.
But I don't want anybody to think that, like, you know, the rest of us don't care about that. We care about all of this, but again, I, yeah, I think we...
Well, but some of those things that I voted for, like that, fit into a larger picture that we were talking about, like the economic development goals, because that particular one, the infrastructure and utilities one, is something that came up a lot while we were discussing economic development goals. And so that was something that, you know, I felt like should be part of the planning, you know, as we move forward. But I agree that the financial management goals, with the possible exception of the coordinating with the Board of Ed, are, you know, things that should happen anyway. You know, I'm not sure that that's a...
Yeah, I went heavy, I went heavy on the financial management. After I reviewed this and now, in looking through this retrospectively, I went heavy on the financial management part because I was kind of surprised that some of the stuff hadn't been already, hadn't been already done. And I figured we should be knocking this off sort of near term. There isn't, there isn't a meeting that doesn't go by where, if you move down, analysis of the special revenue fund, whether that belongs up there or not, it's something that clearly is on, is a topic of conversation, pro or not, but it's a topic, we should be addressing it. But then, at the bottom, so I became bogged down, I think, in focusing, and maybe I, again, supporting myself that we need two, two separate sort of lanes that we're driving down. The one is the immediate term and long term, because things like, only two votes for improved cell service, which is, which is a massive complaint.
Yeah.
For so many people in this town. But then it also becomes, that's an issue of safety, it's inconvenience, but then it also rolls into economic development, which I want to be a bigger part of. So the more we work through, I'm glad we did this, and we're finding commonality in our concerns, but definitely not devaluing what we can do near term and then far term. So three set, and then, I think, go for a secondary cut at this.
Well, it would have been real easy if Eric had given us more stickers, but no.
Eric was very conservative with his stickers.
I got to do a better lobbying job for my disc golf course.
I was going to cut my own half.
I noticed that the splash pad and the disc golf course each got one vote. I think I know where that vote came from.
Yeah, I got it too.
Well, and it wasn't the splash pad I was voting for. I was voting for pool access for adults. I actually wrote it in the margins.
So to be clear, I think, so to clear to the public, I think that we move forward with some, reset these as a short term and long term? Is that what we should be doing?
I just like the, I think if we move, I think if we separate it, either short term, long term, or strategic versus office versus capital, or however, just so that it's better segmented, and we don't need 10 votes each for those, all of a sudden now we have 30 priorities. But just, again, to better prioritize those, and just because they're not on the top of the list now, doesn't mean six or 12 months, they don't move up either.
And if some of these lower priority ones can be tackled in a couple of meetings, then let's do it. Because I think everything on here, we all generally agree, is a good idea. Maria, do you feel like you have the direction?
Oh, absolutely. We can definitely reorganize the information and bring back another draft, absolutely.
Okay. Any other conversation on this?
Sometimes it takes us a little while to get to that, but it's like...
That's okay, this was your first time.
You have to show people sometimes what they don't exactly want, so they can tell you what they do.
Yeah, no, this is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. This is great. So the next item is looking at the Economic Development Commission work plan. So this one, I'm hoping we can do in a similar fashion, where we don't necessarily do a formal motion to approve it, but we approve it by consensus, because we will share this with the new Economic Development Commission, and I expect it'll be a conversation, and they'll come to us with questions or clarifications, or even some things that we might not have considered. So I don't want this to be in stone, but I wanted to have the conversation tonight to make sure that this generally looks like it reflects our priorities. So what I did is I took the economic development priorities that we ranked as a group, and then Cheryl and I discussed what would be the specific activities that the new EDC would do around each of these. So I can, I can touch on them briefly. So we had discussed business incentives, and I know there was a lot of support for an infrastructure rebate program, but we thought about even broadening that to looking at what are all of the different kinds of incentive programs that are legal in Connecticut, and asking the EDC to review those and come to us with a recommendation on which ones they think would make most sense for our community.
Yes, in addition to how they recommend, we fund them.
Oh, absolutely.
Because if there's grants or programs or things out there, because, and again, that's part of why this, the infrastructure rebate program died, is because once the funding was out of it, it was out of the operating budget, and there was no, there was no continued commitment to refund it at that point. So, again, it all sounds good, but then we have to transfer $250,000 from somewhere, or half a million dollars, and that, that's where it becomes more challenging.
The next one is asking the EDC to look at previous work that the former EDC had done, to see if there are items that are worth revisiting, things that were recommended that were never pursued, and putting a roadmap together for what those items would be. Okay.
Can we shorten the timeframe on that?
Is it less than 12 months?
I think it'd be the very first thing they...
Yeah, in my mind, that would be the very first...
Do nothing else.
Well, it was the first thing we discussed with the new members also. The problem is that the prior reports done by Isabel is about this high from the table of, it's a lot of material. I mean, if we ask them to just go back to the Economic Development Task Force, the, you know, the Fairweather Report, you know, just the recent ones, you know...
How many members do we put on there? How many members do we put?
Seven.
Okay.
So going all the way back, we'll say to the charrette, you know, it's, there's a lot of reports in there. So we tried to not be too overwhelming with the amount of material that is available to them, but...
I mean, I don't, these are all professionals, and they're all far more well-versed in this initiative than I'm going to be. I can't even imagine that they aren't going to take that as their, I'd be shocked if they didn't take that as their very first initiative themselves, so I'd imagine they can deliver it before 12 months, right?
Oh, I'm sure they will.
I'm sure. You want to tie box them, Sean.
Let's do, okay, let's do that.
Let's get corporate. You and I live in a corporate world. We love this stuff.
I do, and if you give people 12 months, they take 13, so. That's generally my experience. I'm not, and I'm not saying that, yes, they're professional, but it just, to me, that's day one, dollar one, do nothing else before you do that. Otherwise, we're wasting time on the other things, because if those ideas and solutions are already in there, we're just recreating the wheel.
Right. Well, and that was the point of this, this part of the process.
So if we make that less than, if we make it say like six months or less, that'll tell them that we're very interested in that one.
Yeah, get this done first.
Or you can just put it first on the list, too.
This is not in order, by the way.
That would probably make me happy.
But yes.
That was one on the list and bolded and highlighted.
He wants it done by St. Patrick's Day, so he can celebrate. He wants it the first three months.
I don't need incentive to celebrate. He doesn't need that.
I know, Sean Patrick.
I think having a timeframe of less than 12 months and having it be first would be the way to go.
Okay. And again, by no means do I think, or I don't think the rest of us think, I mean, that they've got to go through every single page and be an expert on, yeah. I mean, we've read most of those, and, you know, over the course of eight years, I, you're right, Cheryl, I appreciate how much information's in there.
Yeah. Well, it's also part of their sort of onboarding process and their coalescing as a group, is to let them see, you know, the type of things that have been done in the past and what we can build on. So, you know, most of them have not, in fact, all, none of them have served on an EDC before, and all of them are coming from different, you know, aspects of the business community. So that item is a way to, you know, sort of bring them into the fold of municipal EDC.
Okay. So this next item has a number of things that are part of it, but basically, we're looking at creating a formalized business visitation program that would try to bring some consistency to making sure that we are looping back with businesses, that we're getting in front of, especially some of our higher tax-paying businesses on a regular basis, making sure we're keeping that communication open. If you scroll down, you know, part of the thought process is creating some kind of a tool or a database where that feedback would be documented, developing an exit survey to understand why do some businesses leave. This is me with my process improvement hat on.
Yep. That one feels right, it's spelled out. Excellent, I like that.
And this last one isn't totally complete, there's a little bit that I want to add to this. So this is around both, I think, supporting entrepreneurs and also attracting high-tech businesses. So what's up there, refine existing branding materials created with the Preserve America Grant. But the other piece of that was that staff was going to recommend an incentive package that would then be marketed, this would be the EDC getting their hands dirty, this would then be marketed by members of the EDC, which is something that town staff have less bandwidth to do.
So that makes sense for now, but let's talk about that one as it goes. Because is it EDC, is it us, is it the collection of it, is it the Business Visitation Committee? There's a lot of different ways that could go. Maybe, maybe less parameters around that one and see what makes sense as time goes on.
Some of that is going to be supported by Main Street, and, you know, some of that program is in place, but the idea was to enhance that with the new EDC and to work with them on that.
And I think that this group may be best positioned at that point, after all of this has fallen through the filter and all, and they developed, and they may be best positioned to advise exactly who should be doing that and saying, we've watched, we've seen what's been effective and ineffective along this learning path, and we see who can be a good mouthpiece, who can't be a mouthpiece, we see there's conflict, there's not conflict, there's politics, there's not politics, all that stuff, and so I think we should leave it up to them versus, just assuming that out of the gate to be it. Charge them with that responsibility, making identity.
Agreed. I think having them give us a, for lack of a better term, a laundry list of, here's everything we want to do, you know, is it Main Street, is it the Chamber, is it the Town, is it this group, that group, let them give us the feedback, and then we can decide how to get it done.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Does anyone feel like there's any glaring omissions?
That's a lot to bite off.
It is a lot.
I'm sure we'll be told by the group what is amiss.
Yeah.
Right? So let's just assume that we've caught it, and then we're going to...
And this was based off of the priorities that we ranked, so.
And part of their mission is to be more interactive with us. So we've written into their ordinance, you know, that they have to present to us, you know, on a somewhat regular basis, that they are advising us on EDC matters. So we tried to develop this so that this would be a much more interactive process, so that, you know, we can advise them, they can advise us, and so everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Thank you all.
That was the idea.
Yes.
The last item is M, which is proposed 2019 meeting schedule. The only one that I had concern about was the first meeting in April, which is during the school spring break.
I always say that.
And I know I'm not going to be able to be there, and I just wanted to make sure that we'd have a quorum.
That, this happened last year, too, that's when I, I think we had Valentine's Day, we had disastrous conflict with, and then with the children's, with the kids' schools. So that would be a tough week for me as well.
So Maria, we had talked about possibly doing one meeting in April, then in the middle of the month?
Right.
That's in the heart of budget season, though.
That is right in the middle of it.
Can't drop a meeting that month.
You can't leave that out.
Why don't we, as we get closer, see if, because I know, I've got, sometime I'm going to be away in March and May and stuff like that, so let's just kind of, if we have to have a special meeting, we can do that, would be my suggestion.
Yeah. I mean, if we need to cancel one, we could make a special meeting when people are available.
Yeah.
But I don't think we should take it off in the middle of budget.
What kind of a posting do, I'm sorry, I don't know the process, what kind of lead time for posting do we need?
For a special meeting, we have a requirement to post 24 hours in advance of the meeting for the agenda. It's just sometimes preparation of the packed materials, depending on what's on that special...
So there's no different, so it's standard, it's a standard process, it's no different for the BOs meeting?
It would be in that we can't add items to the agenda for a special meeting, which is just a little more restrictive, but aside from that, there really are no substantial differences. And one possibility could be to schedule one meeting, say, in the middle of April as a regular meeting, and then if we needed a special meeting for budget, we could always try to pull together, you know, a quorum of folks at some other point. But it's really your preference, or we could just keep the existing and see if we have a quorum for that second, or, I'm sorry, the first meeting in April.
Yeah, you know, there could be 15 snow days and April vacation moves, so.
Yeah, okay, I'll go with that. I'll go with Mike's.
It's happened.
I'll go with Mike's idea, just keep it as, as we get, I'll be able to tell you, drift closer within a month.
Okay. Any other dates? All right.
Everybody check their spouse's birthday, please.
No, we're good. Okay.
I'm pretty safe.
All right. Then it's approved by consensus.
Oh, wait a minute. The December, don't we have to have, because it's an election year, we have to have, we have to have the new Board of Selectmen.
It has to be the first Monday after the election.
Oh, that's a good call.
Good one.
The organizational meeting has to be on there.
Thank you for catching that. So that would be the first Monday, correct, in December?
It is.
For the organizational meeting?
Yeah, by charter, we have to have that one.
Yes, thank you for catching that.
First Monday in December after following the election.
That's our organizational meeting, right?
Yes, so December 2nd.
Yep.
Thank you for catching that.
Good call, Sean.
Almost forgot, forget that election.
We may not be here, though.
I make no presumption I'll be invited to that meeting, but it needs to be, it needs to be scheduled.
Thank you, December 25th.
Mike, who's?
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, good catch.
Yeah, good catch. Okay.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. All right, moving on to appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective November 14th, 2018, to appoint Karen Stewart to the Communications Committee of the North Central Emergency Management Services Council?
So moved. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Is there a move to accept, with our thanks, the resignation of Jeffrey Dale as the Town Financial Trustee for the Belden Combined Trusts, retroactive to November 13th, 2018?
So moved, with our thanks, for 30 years of service.
30 years of service. Do you second, Mike?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to accept, again, with our thanks, the resignation of Paul Mc...
McElhany.
McElhany.
McElhany, as the Town Legal Trustee for the Belden Combined Trusts, retroactive to November 13th, 2018?
So moved. Second, with our thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion effective November 14th, 2018, to appoint Christopher Drew as a trustee for the Belden Combined Trusts?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we're considering the appointment of Stephen Gelman to the Belden Trusts, but before we move forward, with that, his firm has requested a conflict of interest waiver. And Maria, my understanding is that since his firm does business with the Fire District, they just wanted to make sure that we'd be able to do both.
And the Board of Ed. Yes, yeah, correct. So Shipman and Goodwin does currently represent the Board of Ed, the Fire District, they also do some land use work, so it is possible that an attorney from the firm may represent, you know, private land owner at times, perhaps in a matter that comes before the Planning Commission or Zoning Commission. Mr. Gelman's work is very far removed from all of that work, so actually Bob and I took a look at this, and really thought that the, you know, the risk would be pretty minimal of, of the work overlapping, but also didn't think that him accepting this volunteer position as a citizen of, of our community should really prevent, you know, him from being able to serve as a trustee, or prevent his firm from being able to do that other work.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion effective November 14th, 2018, to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the conflict of interest waiver as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion effective November 14th, 2018, to appoint Stephen Gelman as a trustee for the Belden Combined Trusts?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Is there a motion effective November 14th, 2018, to appoint Joe Buddha as Simsbury's representative to the Central Regional Tourism District Board of Directors for a two-year term expiring November 13th of 2020?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Looking at the minutes from the October 22nd meeting, did anyone have any changes? Okay, those motion, those minutes stand as presented. Any selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
Just a quick update from the Community for Care. I just want to thank everybody who came out to our last program. We had a tremendous turnout, almost 200 people came out for the last program, which I think is a great testament to people's willingness to discuss mental health needs in our community, which I think is healthy for all of us. Our next program will be on January 9th, and it will include a program, including our school resource officers and other professionals from the school system regarding different drugs that are being used in our schools. So you will see actual confiscated drug paraphernalia and other things that parents should be aware of what it looks like, and where they should be looking for it, and how to talk to their children about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have public safety bright and early at 7:00 a.m. tomorrow. Maria has graciously agreed to add the Traffic Authority section to it, just want to give an opportunity at the Public Safety Forum for, for folks, if they do have traffic issues, because we get that from time to time, pedestrian crossing issues, speeding, et cetera. So I know you and the other town staff are working hard on that, but just wanted to get that on, on the, the public agenda there, so appreciate you doing it.
Of course.
Great. Okay. Just wanted to just give everybody a heads up that tonight, the Town Council in Avon is having a conversation around potentially raising the legal age to acquire tobacco and vaping products in Avon from, from 18 to 21. And they're, they're interested in keeping us very close to that, because there are gas stations in Avon that are literally across the street from gas stations in Simsbury. So, so this is an issue that we may be talking more about in one, in one capacity or another. Any other reports? Okay. Anything out of the communications packet that anybody wanted to bring up? There was the very thorough memo, it was a joint memo between Chief Boulder and Maria about the bear situation. I recommend anybody who has concerns about bears and wants to know what's happening in town to read that.
The police department actually put out a memo with information on what you can do at your home, you know, securing your garbage cans, and outside, things around your home from the bears, so it's, it's good to read.
Yeah, that's, that's on the homepage of the town website.
That, that meeting, well, I learned a ton at that meeting, and I learned that I was wrong on a number of things that I thought were correct, about habits, effectiveness, trends in the future and stuff, so it is something people should read.
It was one of my driveway two days ago.
They're everywhere.
Standing against my wife's car.
So the next on the agenda is executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Bob DiCrescenzo, to discuss pending claims and litigation regarding the Deepwater Wind Solar Project and Stop &amp; Shop, which is appealing its assessment?
And for Stop &amp; Shop, our Finance Director and Assessor will be joining us.
Oh, so Amy Merryweather and...
And David Gardner.
David Gardner.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're coming back, and then we go back in.
Because we might have to approve something.
Yes.
Would you guys look behind the presentation scroll about like, how do, like, do you guys do that?
We did not do that one, that one has been done several times by different TTOs and stuff.